Member Tonason.
Here.
Councilmember Vacaro.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bertani.
Here.
And Mayor Moy is absent.
And Mayor Moy, we are hoping and praying that you recover quickly and thoroughly and return for our next meeting. And our invocation tonight will be presented by Pastor David Cobb from the Love Church.
To the mayor, vice mayor, city council, all distinguished guests, let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you with thanksgiving, thanking you for this city, its leadership, and its citizens. We ask that you would bless our leadership, our council, you protect our law enforcement, fire department, and emergency staff. We also ask that you would prosper the citizens in the welfare and the commerce of this city. God, we come before you with such thanksgiving, and we ask that you would look upon us with favor. And now, Lord, I pray that you would look upon us and cause us to prosper in every way, every business, every member, every citizen. I ask these blessings in the matchless name of the one that has given me the authority, Jesus, your Christ, my Lord, and our Savior. Amen.
Amen. And Councilmember Carr, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, ma'am. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under yonder, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we now turn to council reports. Councilmember Carr, would you like to lead off?
Yes, I don't have a report for this session, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Panduro, your report, please.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just have one. Welcome, everyone. Hello. Happy New Year. Tomorrow, the North Texas Business Street Association is having one of their meetings. So it is happening at the Chamber of Commerce office right here across the street at 1111 Webster Street at noon. And they also do them also via Zoom. So if there's any local businesses that are in North Texas, please come on by or contact the chamber. We can give you the Zoom information. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vacaro, would you like to report, please?
Yeah, I'll keep this short, too. Actually, I just wanted to say we had a workshop over the weekend, Friday night and Saturday, and it was productive. We were able to hash out a few things and talk about what the goals will be for the council for this year. So just wanted to wish everybody a happy new year, too, who's in the chamber. It's always good to see people here. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tonason, your report, please.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Yes, I just want to wish everyone a happy new year. We have an item tonight coming up. It's, I'm not pointing it or anything, but it's item number 14, where we're exchanging pepperball carbines, or pepperball, I think they call them loaders, launchers. Anyways, I went out there today to look at them, and just to see, because I'm interested in things like that. And it's, you know, it's a straight across trade, and it's a really, really nice, nice upgrade. And I got to meet Larry and Barry. So if you guys go out there, you might get to meet them. That's all for me.
Thank you. And Councilmember Williams, your report, please.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So happy new year, everyone. I am excited for this year, and I feel like we're off to a really wonderful year, starting with the City Council Retreat. I loved it. It was a day and a half, and the public was welcome. But we again reset, you know, the same priorities for the city: homelessness, housing, downtown Fairfield, organizational excellence, and transparency. And I'm sure that it will be coming up soon as a presentation. But we were shown something I cannot wait for the community to see, Transparency Portal. And it really took our priorities. And it's making us, the city accountable to all of these priorities. You're going to be able to see exactly when you put in issues to the city. You'll be able to see them. You'll be able to see what your neighbors are saying. But anyway, whatever I say won't even compare to what you think when you see it. And so with that, for us this year, I'm excited about 2024. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Excuse me. And my report will be very brief as well. I just want to, you know, first of all, acknowledge that we just celebrated and commemorated the 95th birthday of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And some of us were very honored to attend the celebration at the Hilton Garden Inn yesterday, sponsored and executed with precision by the Fairfield-Sassoon-Vacaville Section of the National Council of Negro Women Incorporated. The presentation was stunning, as always. And what I was reminded of is that while we celebrate Dr. King and all of the work he and so many others did during the civil rights movement, Dr. King was eloquent, and he was a student of nonviolence, and he was a very peaceful man. But Dr. King was a radical, radical individual. And his teachings that he followed were those of Jesus Christ, who was the most radical individual who ever walked this planet. And so I think that what I took away from the message yesterday, and I've been thinking about today, is not to forget the radical activism that took place during those years and thereafter that changed the world. Pre-internet, pre-cell phone, pre, all of that stuff. The churches worked together to harness the goodwill of the United States of America and change the world. So I just want us to remember those good works and remember that this country still struggles every single day with big issues, with powerful issues, and we still have a lot of work to do. So Dr. King and everyone who fought with you, thank you, because I wouldn't be sitting here without that work having happened. And I also want to, I won't reiterate what my colleagues have said about our council retreat last Friday night and Saturday, basically all day. Want to thank staff, and that is everybody in this organization, for great presentations and information. I do want to say the council retreat is an opportunity for our citizens to come and speak with the entire city council, department heads, staff is there. But it's your opportu, it's really your meeting. It's your opportunity to come and speak. You're not on the three-minute mic timer thing that happens during public comment. And it's a real opportunity for you to weigh in on council policy. So I would just like to say, moving forward, I hope that we can have a more rigorous outreach to our community when these meetings happen, because it's a once-a-year opportunity to really speak with us candidly about what matters to you and to weigh in on council policy. So with that, Mr. City Manager, your report, please.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I will be very brief. Do you know what we have not done in seven years here in the city of Fairfield? We have not done a state-of-the-city event here in 2024. On February 15, from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. at the Hilton Garden Inn, we are doing a state-of-the-city event. So tickets are on sale now. It covers breakfast. We have a speaker, Dr. Jerry Nicholsberger from Anderson School of Economic Forecast at UCLA, one of the leading thinkers in economic forecasting here in the state of California. And so if you go to our website or go to the Fairfield-Sassoon Chamber of Commerce website, they're actually the one that are presenting the event. So tickets are on sale now, February 15, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m., Hilton Garden Inn. That concludes my report, Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you. And Mr. City Attorney, your report, please.
I have nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
All right. And are there any agenda changes at this time?
There are not.
Okay. And Madam Clerk, your report, please.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. Just want to thank several groups for adopting streets. Our very own police department adopted two streets. So thank you, chief and staff. Councilmember Panduro also adopted a street. I appreciate that. And a group from Travis, the 60th Air Mobility Wing Justice League, they adopted a section of linear trail. And then I want to thank Linda Elkins, who initially adopted and started the Friends of Laurel Creek program, and she has encouraged her neighbors, Reverend Leanna Hamilton and Kathy Tracy, to each adopt sections of Laurel Creek. So thanks to all of you. And that's it, Mayor.
Thank you. And we turn now to presentations. Our first presentation is a proclamation declaring anti-human trafficking, presented by Councilmember Doris Panduro.
Yes, and she'll be presenting to Sane Sart and to Carrie Derero and Melissa Nixon, if they're here. No? Oh, okay.
Okay, so Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month, January 2024, whereas human trafficking is a nationwide public health and civil rights crisis, with victims and survivors present in all communities, including the city of Fairfield. And whereas human trafficking encompasses both labor and sex trafficking, and affects international and domestic victims of every background, race, gender, sexual orientation, and economic status. And whereas young people, while being particularly vulnerable to trafficking exploitation, often face significant barriers in reporting such incidents. California consistently recording the highest human trafficking rates in the United States, reported 1,334 cases in 2020, according to the National Human Trafficking Hotline. And whereas collaborative efforts are crucial in combating human trafficking, law enforcement, federal and state agencies, nonprofits, social service providers, private industry, and nongovernmental organizations, including Sane Sart and the Solano Anti-Human Trafficking Coalition, are actively working to eradicate human trafficking in Solano County. And whereas the dedicated work of Sane Sart and Nature of Sound within the Solano Anti-Trafficking Coalition has been instrumental in educating the public about violence and exploitation, and in raising awareness about the pressing issue of human trafficking. And whereas, all communities must actively engage in preventing human trafficking by promoting safe, healthy, and supportive environments, by supportive initiatives that aim to eradicate this crisis. And whereas, the city of Fairfield strives to be a community where human trafficking is non-existent, where opportunities are available to all, and where every individual is valued and supported, thus ensuring freedom and identified life for all its inhabitants. Now, therefore, I, Catherine Cat Moy, Mayor of the city of Fairfield, do hereby proclaim the month of January 2024 as Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month. The city acknowledges the critical work of the Sane Sart, Solano Anti-Trafficking Coalition, Nature of Sound, and their coalition partners, and commits to supporting their ongoing efforts to educate, prevent, and combat human trafficking. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next presentation will be the proclamation declaring Martin Luther King Jr. Day, presented by me, to the members of the Fairfield Clergy Action Network, or Fairfield CAN. So would my CAN members please step forward, please? And as you make your way forward, let me say that we will have a framed version of this proclamation I'll be presenting to all of our members at the first CAN meeting of this year, which will be in February. And I'm going to ask you to introduce yourselves and just say a little bit about, and I said a little bit, not sermons pastors. Okay? All right. So first, the proclamation. Whereas in 1983, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. became the first private citizen to be honored with a federal holiday, culminating years of advocacy from the Congressional Black Caucus, activist, and Coretta Scott King, the late minister's widow. And whereas advocates for the holiday fought for a day of federal recognition, not just to celebrate Dr. King's memory, but also to preserve his legacy, one that calls upon all of us to exercise our moral authority, stand up against injustice whenever and wherever that takes place, and protect our most sacred tenets of democracy. And whereas Dr. King Day was officially observed in all 50 states for the first time in the year 2000, in a time when basic voting rights are under attack across the United States of America, and people are being targeted in senseless and violent hate crimes, we continue to turn to Dr. King's teachings more than 50 years after his death. And whereas we are ultimately measured not by where we stand in moments of comfort and convenience, but by the stands we take during times of challenge and controversy, Dr. King provided a framework for how each of us can shape the future and call out injustice and work towards something better. And whereas amid the many challenges we face today, his legacy and inspiration call us to live on in all those fighting for justice. Let us gather strength from Dr. King's legacy and use our moral authority to push for a more equitable state, society, and world as we celebrate Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Now, therefore, Catherine Moy, Mayor of the city of Fairfield, hereby proclaims January 15, 2024, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day in the city of Fairfield, and encourages all residents of Fairfield to honor his legacy by being of service to your fellow citizens and to stand up against injustice. So once again, thank the city of Fairfield and the mayor for this proclamation, which is going to be presented to the members of the Clergy Action Network here in Fairfield. That was founded about three years ago. We're going into our fourth year now. And the Fairfield Clergy Action Network, or CAN, is a collaboration. It's a collaboration of local churches and the city of Fairfield and our local partners. And we stand together to do just what was read in this proclamation and to make Fairfield and Solano County at large a better place to be for our residents, particularly those who are in need of that kind of an environment. We have, the Clergy Action Network has been instrumental in executing and planning several Thanksgiving dinners at our community center. And as we, as we continue to do those, they get better and better. They, they get, the last one we had was obviously in 2023, and we served over 450 individuals who came for a freshly cooked hot meal, entertainment with gospel choirs. We had all kinds of sundries and things to hand out. We had healthcare services there. So it's not, it's more than a meal. It's an experience. We were also instrumental, the Fairfield CAN, in organizing, executing the First Juneteenth Festival here in Fairfield in collaboration with the Solano County Black Chamber of Commerce and our other business partners. So, in a word, I'll say that I think Dr. King would be proud of the work that our churches are doing and standing together as one voice as we bring change to the community. So, I will hand these proclamations out, and we have many more members who are not here, but I'll be presenting this proclamation in a framed form at our first Clergy Action Network meeting in February. So why don't you gentlemen step forward and say a little bit about who you are and your activities with the Clergy Action Network. Pastor Morris?
All right. I'm Pastor Morris, Senior Pastor of the North Church of Christ, located at twenty-one hundred Pennsylvania Avenue, and I am honored to be here tonight on such a wonderful, wonderful celebration and proclamation that I believe one that is long overdue. I thank this city, my mayor, vice mayor, and the city council, along with this beautiful city for allowing us to recognize such a wonderful occasion of celebration, liberation of just freedom in our wonderful country. We know Pam has already preached, but I do want to say to her that I've been a privilege to work with CAN, and CAN has been a wonderful experience for our congregation and our parishioners to serve this community in such a wonderful way. And it's a privilege to have that partnership that we've been able to establish over time. One of the wonderful things I love about Dr. King is he said that, you know, hate can never drive out hate, it takes love to do that. And darkness can never drive away darkness, it takes light to do that. And as long as our city continues to be light, then there'll be no room for darkness. And I'm so appreciative to be a part of that light. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Morris.
My name is David Cobb. I'm the pastor of the Love Community Church here in Fairfield, eleven twenty-five Missouri Street. And it is a sobering thought that we have to fight for civil rights. But it is a wonderful feeling to know that the city of Fairfield recognizes their fight by this proclamation for the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King. So I'm very proud to be a part of CAN, the Community Action Network, and all of the pastors and churches that join and lock shields to help things to be better for the citizens here at the city of Fairfield. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Pastor Christian Bravo from Liberty Church, in Espanol. So I'm so happy to be part of this CAN, the Clergy Action Network, because it enables us to work together in the community. Currently, we're working in different apartments and different places in the city, trying to make this place a better city. And I think we can do it. We can make a change if we all work together in, you know, as Martin Luther King Junior says, you know, he had a dream. And I always keep that in mind, you know, the dream to be a game changer, an agent of change for the community. And I think we can do it together. So I'm happy to be part of this network and working with the city, with the police officers, and, you know, and doing a little bit of, you know, of the change for this city. Thank you.
Amen. Thank you. All right. So here are your proclamations, and you'll get this framed at our next CAN meeting. And if I can have a picture with you gentlemen, squeeze in here. Thank you, Bill.
Ready, one, two, three, and one, two, three.
Thank you.
And next, we have public comments. Persons wishing to address the city council on subjects not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. The council cannot discuss or take action on matters not on the agenda for this meeting, but council members may briefly respond to statements made or questions raised by the public, ask for clarification from staff, refer the matter to staff, request staff to report back to the council at a subsequent meeting, or place the matter on a future agenda. To speak on an agenda item, please use the raise your hand feature if you're online, or press star nine on your phone. Speakers are limited to three minutes per item. And our first speaker is Alex Lunine.
Thank you.
Madam Vice Mayor, city council members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. If y'all remember, back in December, I had promoted an air quality community action plan that Sustainable Solano is facilitating on January twenty-eighth, from twelve to three PM at the Adult Recreation Center. The goal and purpose of this event, in this meeting, is to bring community members together with the city and folks on the county level to discuss the air quality vulnerabilities that our city faces and the ways in which we could push and legislate change for cleaner air. I had given y'all all flyers before. I have flyers back on the right-hand table outside, but I really urge and, you know, ask community members to come out, register online, if you're online, at sustainablesolano.org/events, and I hope to see y'all there to help create a more breathable Fairfield. Thank you.
Alex, night, noon to three?
Noon to three, yeah.
Thank you.
And our next speaker is Olivia Karaoke.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Olivia Karaoke.
Can you bring the mic down a little bit, please? Yeah, just bend it down. There we go.
I'm also with the Youth Air Protectors. And the event from twelve to three is really important because this is an issue affecting everyone in our community, regardless of age group or health conditions or any problems. So we just urge you to come out and hear what the action plan might be and have or add input to anything that you might think should be different in the community as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Hector Alfaro.
Good evening, members of the city council of Fairfield. My name is Hector Alfaro. I am a resident of the city of Fairfield. I work with our school district, interacting with various families and recently arriving people from other countries. The theme today has been peace and stopping the violence in regards to that. All too often, we see it here in our news, the hate and the division that has occurred in our own country. Yet in my interactions with the children from their schools and other cultures and countries, what I most hear from them is the hope and the aspiration for a better way of life. I do not hear any malicious intent or harm to others in the place that they now call home, where I call my home. The immigrants and the different cultures and the diversity from our demographics in our city is what gives us the flavor, the healthy uniqueness that makes us shine as humans at times when things seem to be oblique. I am here to ask the council to agendize a ceasefire resolution for our city. We need to feel empathy, compassion, and civility to our fellow mankind. After all, that is what being a human is. I think that's what Martin Luther King was asking, will we all get along, be peace, and not being vile or uncivil to our neighbors. We have no place in our so-called civilized world for defamatory comments or slurs to our children, our neighbors, our family, or twenty of us for many walks of life, or religion, for who we are. More so when we and our neighbors are people who are just wanting to go to work of good moral perpetuity and examples of good to our community, who wish no harm to others, just hardworking contributing members in our community. We have a diverse community, which in turn we need to be accountable for the actions as how soon we project that to our children and in our schools, at home, and in our community. We need to nurture respect for the others and acceptance. We have a responsibility to do what is right, and an opportunity at this time to do this by demonstrating we want our city to be a ceasefire city like our neighboring cities around us. We, unlike other parts of the world, are fortunate and blessed that we live in a community, a state, a city where we are not besieged by bombs or running for our lives. I believe we can make use of our taxpayer money to invest in other areas of education to better understand our community, our neighbors, rather than to carry out actions that separate and spread hate. We have enough of that.
You have thirty seconds, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. In closing, we already have too much of that going on in our country. So let's start by uniting and showing we can all coexist, at least in our own town. And I thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Ajam Khan.
Good evening, city council. My name is Ajam Khan, and I'm a resident of Fairfield. I'm a director of a school organization and was a former administrator right here in the district. I've been a teacher, principal, and director for over twenty-four years. While we have lived in Solano County since two thousand and ten, we have moved to Fairfield in two thousand and sixteen and spent the last seven years raising our children here. I come to you to urge the city council to call for a ceasefire resolution. San Francisco has done it, Richmond has done it, and numerous other cities have followed suit. While you may not think that there is a place for this in a city's responsibilities, this has everything to do with all of us. Just as we were talking about MLK and the peacefulness that he brought, we need to do the same. Think about all the historical atrocities that have occurred throughout the past century, and all the people who have spoke up time and time again for what is right and what is humane. What is happening in Gaza is neither right nor humane. There is also a side of this that I will shed light on, which I hope I can get to later in my public comment. We know the facts. We know that eight hundred thousand Palestinians face death by starvation or water shortage. We also know to date that thirty-one thousand are dead. Imagine, if you will, the city of Dixon and Rio Vista just being completely wiped up, the face of the earth. Of those deaths, there are twelve thousand children. It is hard not to feel empathy, compassion, and heartache when you see the images coming out of Gaza. The other part to this that I alluded to is the sense of safety. I say sense. Sense because I don't think I've ever truly felt safe or comfortable to share or to speak about my personal experiences and aggressions that I have had to face, both micro and more serious. Speaking about these matters, in my opinion, is a moral obligation, not antisemitic. Just recently, my daughter was called a bomber by a classmate. While the school handled it well, there are schools that don't know how to handle it, and the kids feel unsafe and unsettled. Islamophobia is prevalent and is something that I have personally dealt with in my life.
You have thirty seconds, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I can certainly understand how these kids are feeling, including my own child. Our parents and families have spent so much time and energy trying to make it here as immigrants of the past. We were taught to put your head down and grind through the struggles. We spent decades just learning and growing and getting educated and trying to earn respect through sports or academic accolades. In closing, what's real is the trauma and death that is going on. The least we could do is come together as a city and have a collective voice that we oppose the killing of innocent civilians and children. Those lives lost have affected generations to come. I do not want my taxpayer dollars going to fund bombing of these people who have suffered collective punishment. Please agendize a ceasefire resolution and get this on a city council agenda so we can move forward together, just like Fairfield has always done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Shaheen.
Good morning. Sorry, good evening. My name is Shaheen Sheikh, and I come to you this evening to share my concerns as a peace-loving, law-abiding taxpayer, a mother, a healthcare worker that lives and works in Fairfield. I want to say I respect all people of all races and religion. I live my life as a God-fearing person that believes in the values of compassion, service to others, and hopes for a future where our American ideals for liberty and justice for all are realized both here in the states and around the world. I've been deeply troubled and heartbroken since October seventh, the loss of innocent life that was taken on that day, and now for one hundred and one days since then, has been very difficult to bear, and it has impacted many of us here in Fairfield. I want to highlight three take-home points. The lack of acknowledgement by our city council on how this war is affecting all of its residents has left me feeling unsafe. The division that has been created by having leadership that publicly only acknowledges one side is breeding both antisemitism and Islamophobia in our community. And despite my right of free speech and peaceful protest afforded to me by the Constitution, I do live in fear that my advocacy for the children of Gaza will put me and my family at risk for Islamophobic hate crimes, hate speech, and unfair disciplinary action in the workplace. Number two, I go to work to help save lives and improve the quality of life for our sick and injured, and to know that the money from my income taxes is being used to kill innocent children is heartbreaking. Yearly, one point three six million dollars of the three point eight billion aid sent for weapons is from our local city taxes. Can you imagine the positive impact we can have in our own communities with this money? As a healthcare worker, I see firsthand the impact of the lack of resources from our own residents, hospital readmissions due to the inability to afford medications, poor accessibility of mental health services, the increasing opioid crisis, homelessness, the list goes on. I want my money to go towards the betterment of my community, not towards more bombs that indiscriminate kill civilians, and definitely not towards South Africa's charge of genocide in the International Court of Justice. And lastly, for all those that ask, why bring this to local city council? I ask you, why not? Alongside two-thirds of the American population, I have called, written to our federal representatives, participated in peaceful vigils, calling for a permanent ceasefire, in hopes that the US can finally be a leader in brokering peace by holding both sides accountable and addressing the root cause. My voice alongside the four hundred thousand that marched this past weekend in Washington is being ignored. I ask that my local city council members elevate my voice for peace and humanity, to demand accountability from our federal leadership, and to stand alongside cities of Richmond, Oakland, SF, and Davis and agendize a ceasefire resolution. After one hundred and one days and no end in sight, I ask how many more will have to die? How long, excuse me, how will continued bombing lead towards lasting peace? To end, I would like to quote Martin Luther King Junior, quote, "The past is prophetic in that it asserts loudly that wars are poor chisels for carving out peaceful tomorrows." And quote, "Our loyalties must transcend our race, our tribe, our class, and our nation. And this means we must develop a world perspective." Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Saad Qureshi.
Good evening, esteemed members of the Fairfield City Council. My name is Saad, and I'm a resident of Fairfield. And I'm here today to urge you guys to consider introducing a ceasefire resolution. Fairfield is known for its historic roots and multicultural community, reflects the value of unity and understanding. Our demographics, shaped by the multitude of backgrounds, including Arab and Muslim residents, underscores the importance of fostering an inclusive and compassionate environment. The city has thrived on principle of justice and fairness. By introducing a ceasefire resolution, we not only align with our historical commitment to human rights, but also acknowledge the impact on our diverse communities. Hate incidents have risen over two hundred percent for Muslim Americans since October seventh, which demands our urgent attention to keep our families safe. Fairfield has always stood as a symbol of solidarity, embracing different cultures and backgrounds. By introducing the ceasefire now resolution, we not only reflect our commitment to peace, but also send a powerful message beyond our city limits. It resonates with the spirit of unity that has defined Fairfield throughout its history. Our demographics tell the story of coexistence, understanding, and shared humanity. Let us draw upon this history as we consider the importance of introducing a resolution that aligns with our values, protects our residents, and contributes to a more just world. I urge you to stand on the right side of history, echoing Fairfield's commitment to justice and compassion, introducing the ceasefire now resolution to the agenda next month, and let the city, let our city be a beacon of hope for people around the world and moral leadership. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And our next speaker, I'm not sure of the writing. Is it Hina Faroud? Hina, I'm sorry. H-I-N-A?
Hina, yeah.
Thank you.
Hello, council members. My name is Hina Farouk, and I'm also a resident of Fairfield and a local business owner. I'm also here to talk to you guys about adding a resolution for a ceasefire. I want to start in remembrance of Martin Luther King's birthday yesterday. To quote him, "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. We are caught in an inescapable network of mutuality tied in a single garment of destiny. Whatever affects one directly..." Whatever affects one directly affects all indirectly. These words from Martin Luther King Jr. are a reminder that we all have a responsibility to take a stand when we witness injustice. In Palestine, right now as we speak, all innocent civilians are enduring a grave injustice as they're indiscriminately being bombed for what is now one hundred and one straight days. Over twenty-seven thousand civilians are confirmed dead of those twelve thousand are children. I would like you to consider a scenario where there is an active shooter hiding in a school. Would it be justified to bomb the entire school into the ground because of that one shooter hiding? A school full of teachers, of children. Is that any type of justice? We are so privileged to be living in our safe homes here in Fairfield without the fear of constant death on our minds. We should use our privilege to help others and not take it for granted. I urge everyone here to do their own research about exactly what is happening over there. If this amount of active intentional damage was happening anywhere else in the world, maybe we would have called for a ceasefire days, if not months ago. Our UX tax dollars should be invested in the people of this community and our own country rather than funding this genocide. We need a ceasefire resolution as soon as possible from every single person, every city, every state, until our nation hears us and until they call for this death to end. Please, please, please add this to your agenda and do your part in using your powerful voices to create peace. This is not a Palestinian conflict. It's not just a Muslim issue. It's a humanitarian crisis that we can put a stop to if we wanted to. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I don't have any more cards. I do see two hands raised online. Valeria, are those hands raised for public comment?
Yes. The first one is Navi Desai. You have three minutes.
Okay. And could you please say your name, state your name? Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Actually, my husband's name is on the screen. My name is Asma, A-S-M-A, last name is Shaikh, S-H-A-I-K-H. I'm a mother, a healthcare worker, with family ties to the city of Fairfield, and I, like many others tonight, am urging the City Council to call for an immediate and permanent ceasefire by introducing a resolution on your next agenda. As others have already stated, but it bears additional witness, over thirty thousand innocent civilians have been killed, half of whom are women and children. Almost four hundred are healthcare workers, such as myself and others who have been in the council chambers tonight, and close to seventy-five journalists have also been killed. I was born and raised here in the Bay Area, and again, I said I was a healthcare worker and a mother of two girls, and there are so many reasons why I'm here tonight. Fairfield touts itself as a city that is open to people from all backgrounds. I went on the website to learn more about the mission and vision statements of the city of Fairfield, and there is mention of it being a safe, diverse, and inclusive city for all. When we say "for all," what do we really mean? I'm hoping that it means truly all of us, not just the ones that have historically been amplified, but all of us, including our Palestinian, Arab, and Muslim communities who, for reasons of fear, don't even come out to meetings like this because they're scared that their voices and their opinions can be targeted. I have two little girls who go to school, and they look like the kids that are being killed. I, myself, go into the hospital every day looking like the doctors and the pharmacists and the nurses who have been targeted and killed. And yet, our cities are failing to provide us with a statement of protection, to condemn anti-Semitic, as well as anti-Palestinian, anti-Arab, and anti-Muslim hate in all forms. Let's be clear, when was the last time these city hall chambers expressed so much emotion from their constituents? We're so let down, so desperate with our -- from our state and national electeds that we are coming to the people that we voted into power, you all, who have a voice, who have a stake in all of this, to make a statement and to make your voices heard for all constituents? And what are we asking for? The bare minimum, peace for all people, which starts with ceasefire. Lastly, for all those that say that City Councils have no place in this, today I'm letting you know that you have the opportunity to make a statement, to stop, to stop the death, to stop the violence, and to stop the killing.
You have twenty seconds, ma'am.
And to make a statement that our tax dollars, sure, that our tax dollars, which are so hard to earn, are not sent for the killing of people and children that look like many of us. Lastly, yesterday was MLK. Others have already said that we should honor his legacy. Please ask yourselves tonight, what would MLK have done in this moment? Thank you. Please call for an immediate and permanent ceasefire.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any more speakers?
It's showing now that there are three hands raised. Valeria, can you bring the next speaker on, please?
Yes. We have Ruby Ali.
And could the next speaker state his or her name? Thank you.
Hi, this is Ruby. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Dr. Ruby Ali. I'm a neurologist at Vacaville Hospital and Fairfield Hospital at North Bay, and I request a resolution for ceasefire from Fairfield City Council. Many other cities in this neighborhood, including Davis, San Francisco, Richmond, have requested a ceasefire. When is enough enough? Already over thirty-two thousand Palestinians have been murdered in cold blood. This is a genocide. Fairfield and its participants and its city members cannot be complicit in a genocide. We can no longer just watch and watch children being murdered day by day. Ten thousand children have been murdered in Palestine. There's no justification of civilian death. There is no justification for death of children by -- as a means to defeat Hamas. Killing innocent women and children is not a means to win any war. Why is asking for a ceasefire a dangerous thing? Asking to stop hostilities, asking to stop war crimes, when is that a ridiculous idea? I mean, this should be obvious for every human being that we should not have war. Since war -- since when has war helped any nation? It never does. And we need to stand together to end the violence, to help people go towards negotiations, to release hostages, to release the pain and suffering of the Palestinian people. We cannot allow a genocide in front of our eyes, in front of our -- and every day, we've been watching for a hundred and two days genocide of the Palestinians. And when is enough enough? I am tired of having to try to tell people that killing innocent women and children is a war crime. If others cannot see the humanity of the Palestinians, then there is a question about their own humanity.
You have twenty seconds, ma'am.
In conclusion, we have to be on the right side of history and end the occupation of Palestine. Thank you so much for listening to my words.
Thank you for calling in.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
And I believe we have one more speaker online.
Yes, we have Dr. Shaheed Heman.
Okay, if he could repeat his name, that would be great. Thank you.
Shaheed Rehman. Can you guys hear me?
Can you please spell your name for the record, sir?
Shaheed, S-H-A-H-I-D. My last name is Rehman, R-E-H-M-A-N.
Thank you.
I'm actually serving this Solano County community for more than thirteen years as a healthcare provider, and I have deep ties. I have love for the community and my patients. And I just want to say a few words. I'm not going to take even three minutes from your time. What is happening on the international kind of scenario in Palestine, I think that we should adopt a resolution in condemning civilian kind of casualties which is happening there. I think I have the right to request that to the council members, respected council members. I had been listening to all of this meeting, and of course, Dr. King's kind of some of the remarkable kind of things as well, which he said that non-violence is the solution to a lot of our problems, not just at our community level, but at the international level as well. So I would request my respected City Council members to adopt a resolution to -- for the ceasefire in Gaza. I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And that's it. Did anyone else wish to speak on this, on public comment? Okay, and I do not have any more hands raised online.
Okay, thank you. Let me first say thank you very much for taking the time and having the courage and investing yourselves and your lives into this City Council and loving this city enough to raise awareness here in the city of Fairfield regarding this very vital issue, which I believe agendizing deserves an en banc or a full City Council discussion. As you see, our mayor is not here this evening. She's out with the flu. So I will -- so I believe that this issue deserves a discussion of the full City Council on the record. So with that said, this evening, I will open it up to any City Council members who want to weigh in, at least initially, on the ceasefire proclamation, your comments, if anybody wants to speak. Councilmember Vacaro.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. Yeah, I do want to thank everybody who spoke tonight on this issue. I believe on December nineteenth, the last meeting we had, I had mentioned I was hoping by now there would be a ceasefire. Because, you know, we talked about Dr. King earlier, and, you know, I was -- I was actually had the privilege of meeting Coretta Scott King in my -- thank you. I met Coretta Scott King in New York when I was about twelve years old, when we named a park after her husband that had just been killed about a year before. And, you know, that resonated with me, and when I talked to some of the people that are connected with what's going on in the Middle East right now, it's really not a political thing right now to me with a ceasefire. To me, it's a human thing. And there's kids getting killed out there, just like with what Hamas did was wrong and horrible. What's going on with kids getting killed, eleven-year-old, twelve-year-old babies getting killed? I mean, there has to be an end to this at some point. And I will defer to the Vice Mayor. We can do that, you know, discussion next week. I just, to me, you know, it gets to the point where you don't even want to watch the news because you see, you know, the last thing I want to see is, you know, young people getting killed out there, and anybody getting killed, but just, you know, just senseless. It's that type of violence, there's really no place for this. And it's not like a resolution is going to stop anything. What it is, it's a statement. A statement's much different. A statement is just how you believe, how this council would feel, how the city would feel. You know, I moved back to Fairfield here because I wanted to raise my kids in a city that was diverse, and they'd be accepted, no matter who they were and what they looked like. And I think that's critical. So anybody, if this fallen on deaf ears, too bad, because it shouldn't. So that's my thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Vacaro. Would anyone else like to say a word? Councilmember Tonason.
I think I just want to ask the city attorney a word. If we are agendizing it whenever you guys want to agendize it, we can't discuss it that night.
I'm sorry, it's a question if you agendize it, can you talk about it on the night you agendize it?
No, no, if we agendize it whenever you want to do it, that night, we wouldn't be able to discuss it anyways, would we?
No, if you -- depending on what you agendize. So if you agendize, I've heard the word "resolution," I've heard the word "statement." So whatever you agendize, you can discuss it on the night that you decide and direct staff to agendize it.
Can I correct you on that, Mr. City Attorney?
Sure.
What I meant -- sorry about that.
Sure.
What I meant by "statement" is meaning a resolution is a statement.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
And what I'm talking about is when we agendize something, it has to go on the agenda before we can discuss it.
On a future agenda, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Correct.
But you're saying we want to have a full council to discuss it?
I think that this matter deserves a full discussion and to have the mayor here.
Hundred percent agree with that, but if there's a full council and we agendize it that night when there's a full council, we can't discuss it.
It'll go to a future meeting.
Okay, good.
But we can have a discussion around agendizing. Is that correct?
That's what you're doing now, right?
Well, we're having a discussion based on public comment, but when we vote to agendize with the full City Council here, at that time, we can discuss our reasoning for agendizing, and so we can have that kind of a limited discussion around the issue then.
Yeah, so I'm sorry, I thought I misunderstood. I think I misunderstood you. I read your initial comments as asking this council for comments on whether they would want to agendize the matter.
And this is comments on the information we just received from our residents?
I think making statements, either in support or against any potential resolution, is potentially a violation of the Brown Act, because nothing has been agendized. We've had public speakers who've come to express their opinion, as is their right. The council can make brief statements, as you've done, thinking.
And that's what this is.
Right, but I think it's getting a little close to where people are starting to express how they would want to vote on a resolution, where they would support. So I think your initial request for comments as to whether you would want to agendize something later is fine to get input, but to make statements on how you would vote on that resolution is getting a little close to discussing how you would decide an issue that's not currently before the council.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. And with that said, would anyone else like to say anything before we move forward? Councilwoman Williams.
I would like to agendize.
Okay.
I'll entertain that motion.
All right, so we have a motion to agendize, and we have a second, and that's what it takes to go on the agenda. Is that correct?
Actually, you only need two council members to request staff. You don't need a motion. So we've heard now from more than two council members that they'd like to agendize the discussion of a resolution. I don't think you're asking to put a resolution on, you're asking to discuss whether to put a resolution on. So I think, and the city manager can correct me, but I think that's sufficient at this point. You don't need a motion.
Okay, so then it will be agendized for a future meeting based on the council action today?
Yeah, just so what I hear from you is we will put on a future agenda a discussion about a resolution.
A full council discussion.
A full council discussion.
Correct.
And it's just to discuss whether to do a resolution, not a resolution.
Correct. Right, so we will -- so does everyone understand what -- so it is now going to be this matter of a ceasefire resolution will now be placed on a future agenda for full council discussion. So, and I implore you to, you know, return and share any other information, any other input you want to have. And where I come from this is that, you know, my concern, as I'm sure with all of us, is that when our residents feel unsafe, for whatever reason, and this is a very important one, that's a call to action for the City Council. So we will be, and for this council to do whatever it is in our authority to diminish and lessen and alleviate those kinds of concerns by our residents. So with that said, it is going to be agendized. Can we say when it will be agendized, Mr. City Manager?
That can be your next meeting.
At our next meeting?
Yeah.
And which is?
February 6.
So on February 6, we will discuss the ceasefire as an agenda item. All right, that's it. Thank you, City Councilmembers. And is there anything else for public comment?
No.
Okay. Moving on, so Madam Clerk, the Successor Agency Consent Calendar notice, please.
Yes, all matters listed on the Successor Agency Consent Calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the agency or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item. And the item is on consent, so I don't normally read the title.
Thank you. Do we have any public speakers on this item?
No, I do not.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the Successor Agency Consent Calendar.
So moved.
So moved.
She moved in a second.
Okay, so moved by Councilman Panduro, seconded by Councilmember Vacaro. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. We now turn to the housing authority. Madam Clerk, the housing authority notice, please.
Yes, the holding of a joint meeting of the city council and housing authority entitles the council members to receive additional compensation of $35 for attending this joint meeting. And I'll take roll call. Commissioners Carr?
Here.
Commissioner Panduro?
Here.
Commissioner Tonison?
Here.
Commissioner Vacaro?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
And Vice Chair Bertoni?
Here.
And then I'll read the statement. All matters listed on the housing authority consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the authority or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item. And again, this is a consent item.
Thank you.
I have no speakers.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the housing authority agenda. And who moved that? Okay, moved by Councilman Tonison, seconded by Councilmember Carr. All those in favor?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Thank you. We will now reconvene the city council meeting and turn to the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, please.
Yes, and this is the regular consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the city council or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item. And I do not have any requests to speak.
So moved.
Okay, well, I, I don't even, okay, you've already entertained the motion for me. So it's moved by Councilman Tonison. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Vacaro. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. That passes unanimously. And we now turn to new business. Item 17, please, Madam Clerk.
Minute action approving mayor's appointments to the Gulf Advisory Board, Landscape Oversight Committee, and Solano County Mosquito Abatement District Board of Trustees. And you do need to vote to approve those appointments. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public speakers on this item?
No, I do not.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointments.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, that was-
Me and Doris.
The motion was made by Councilmember Tonison and approved by the dual team of Councilmember Vacaro and Councilmember Panduro. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. That passes unanimously.
Okay.
So Madam Clerk, the oaths.
Yes, I'll call up the three members from the Gulf Advisory Board, Jack Daly, Dennis Hooton, and Dennis Spiller, if you can come to the front here. And for the Landscape Oversight Committee, Christina Incarnacion for District 2, and Solano County Mosquito Abatement District Board of Trustees, Paul Wade. Okay, thank you. Okay, can everyone hear me? Okay, sorry. If you could all raise your right hand and repeat after me. First, we'll start with aye in our names. Aye. Thank you. And then together, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. Congratulations.
Congratulations, everyone.
So I have certificates for you, and I do need you to sign your oath, so if you can come over here. Also, I have goodies for you. Would you like to pass those out? Okay, that's for Jack.
Councilmember Tonison, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, I just want to, I want to thank you all for applying. For the Gulf Advisory Board, we had 11 applicants, and just the, the interest in, in being on the Gulf Advisory Board was, was fantastic. And for everyone that applied, we appreciate you applying and come back again.
Is Dennis Hooton here? You aren't, I thought you were. Okay. That's for you. Oh, and there's your oath. Yeah, sorry. Say hi to your mom, Jerry. Yeah, just right there. Thank you so much. Okay, and then that's for you. And Dennis Spiller, and I know you too.
I have the official thank you, babe.
Just sign right there.
Thank you again for your service. We appreciate you all and look forward to great things from you. All right. Hi, Carol, my neighbor. Okay, we now turn to public hearings.
Public hearing, item 18. Public hearing and first reading and introduction of ordinance 2024-01 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, amending section 2528.5 of the City of Fairfield zoning ordinance to permit selected industrial business park uses for commercial, for office commercial, North Cordelia Zone properties south of Business Center Drive, and establish certain design and operating standards. And our presenter is Jesse Hernandez, Associate Planner.
It's raining like a big dog.
Good evening, City Council and folks joining us tonight. My name is Jesse Hernandez, and I'll be presenting item 18, which proposes to amend the North Cordelia overlay by permitting certain industrial business park uses for office commercial North Cordelia zoned properties south of Business Center Drive. The applicant originally requested a general plan amendment and zone change for 5253 Business Center Drive from office commercial to industrial business park. The expressed purpose was to expand permitted land uses to attract a tenant after long-term vacancy. In March 2022, the city council continued the public hearing to September 2023. The city council provided direction for 5253 Business Center Drive on September 12th, 2023. Staff understood the city council direction to mean prohibiting warehouses and permitting manufacturing without introducing trucks. The applicant amended his original request in October 2023 to request an overlay amendment to expand industrial business park uses at 5253 Business Center Drive. Staff crafted the proposed overlay to implement city council direction and thread the narrow path of permitting manufacturing without introducing additional truck traffic. In addition, staff aimed to expand land uses per the applicant's request while maintaining the commercial character of the property due to neighboring residential and commercial uses. Staff also kept in mind the property owner's ability to demolish existing buildings and redevelop their property following established development regulations. The North Cordelia overlay applies to all properties north of I-80 and west of Susun Valley Road, shown here within the red boundary. The overlay applies design and traffic standards and requires public art or an in lieu fee as part of new development. The proposed overlay amendment would only apply to office commercial North Cordelia zoned properties south of Business Center Drive, which includes two properties total, including 5253 Business Center Drive and 5251 Business Center Drive. These two properties are outlined here in red. The proposal would expand land uses to include most IBP land uses and establish design and operating restrictions to implement city council direction. The amended overlay would permit every IBP land use at CO NC properties south of Business Center Drive except for three land uses. Notably, the amended overlay would permit research and development and light manufacturing as requested by the applicant. The three IBP uses that would remain unpermitted in this proposed overlay are medium manufacturing and assembly, warehousing and distribution, and antenna or communications facilities. The September 12th direction clearly prohibited warehouses. To thread the narrow path of allowing manufacturing while not allowing trucks, staff concluded that light manufacturing would be permitted and medium manufacturing would not, due to the more intense nature of the medium manufacturing land use. In addition, the overlay establishes design and operating conditions to ensure new land uses do not generate too many trucks. Again, the purpose of all operating restrictions is to align with city council direction and maintain the commercial character of the area. The first operating restriction applies citywide to all cannabis businesses and restricts cannabis businesses from locating near sensitive uses such as schools and child cares. The second prohibits outdoor operations for vocational schools, which offer technical and operational training and typically involve workshops. Examples would include welding and woodworking. The third operating restriction prohibits outdoor storage, and the fourth prohibits trailer trucks from traveling to or from CO NC parcels during peak hours. We defined peak hours as being from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. on weekdays, and from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on weekends. I'd like to note that this, this would not apply to box trucks. It would only apply to trailered trucks. The proposed design restrictions would prohibit truck docks, limit roll-up doors on elevations facing public streets, and maintain the existing design quality. Again, the purpose is to follow city council directions of no trucks and to maintain the commercial character of the property and the surrounding area. Staff concluded that allowing design improvements that facilitate trucks, such as truck docks, would not align with city council direction. In addition, I want to emphasize that any property owner can demolish their building and redevelop their property following established development regulations. For example, if we do not prohibit truck docks, the property owner can add as many as they like or even demolish their building. If we do not require the commercial character and design quality to be maintained, they could redevelop a building that is industrial in character. To summarize, the proposed overlay would allow most IBP uses with the notable exceptions of warehousing and medium manufacturing. Operational restrictions would include no outdoor operations or storage and no trailered trucks traveling during peak hours. Design restrictions would include no truck docks, only one roll-up door on elevations facing public streets, and a requirement to maintain the existing design quality. The applicant disagrees with staff's recommendation and requests that the city council permit truck docks and medium manufacturing. The applicant expressed the desire to install six truck docks and shared this site plan illustrating these truck docks. The planning commission recommends a compromise that would allow up to four truck docks. So I do want to be clear that staff, I've presented staff's recommendation, the planning commission recommends a amended recommendation that would allow up to four truck docks. Otherwise, the two recommendations are similar. Finally, staff concludes that allowing truck docks will facilitate truck traffic. Staff recommend that the city council adopt ordinance 2024-01, approving the ordinance amendment as proposed by staff. Alternatively, the city council could direct staff to return with a revised ordinance with new language or with a resolution denying the ordinance amendment. An example of a revised ordinance could recommend the planning commission's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your report. Very well done. And I will open the public hearing. Do we have any public speakers?
Yes.
On this item?
Yes, Nora Dezen and Jose McNeil.
Thank you.
Okay, so Nora.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you for letting me speak on this tonight. First, I want to thank you all for making it clear that our residents really don't want any more truck traffic out in our area. And I really want to thank the staff member for putting together such a well-crafted method to meet the residents' concern while also trying to expand the use that Mr. McNeil is trying to get. The problem here is that if it is approved, the four truck docks, you know, it's very obvious, if you include truck docks, you're going to encourage truck traffic. Well, the problem is that I believe this applies to both properties in that area, and so conceivably, the new owner or Mr. McNeil could end up selling the property, and whoever owns it, they could tear down the property, build something 45 feet high and have four truck docks, and you've got two buildings there, so we're talking eight truck docks. That is the problem with the request that's being, you know, being put forth. And I, like I say, I really do hope that you will adhere to what the planning department has put together. Excellent suggestion. It works. We understand that you just can't stop progress, and like to see business there, but please, think about what the residents are going to have to put up with if, like I say, four truck docks, two buildings, that's eight truck docks. And then, on another side note, I want to thank you all for how you're managing the Red Top Road widening project. We feel the difference. We feel better. We feel respected by you, and I hope tonight you'll think about the residents again. Thank you.
Thank you. And next speaker, Jose McNeil. And I don't have any hands raised online.
Thank you for letting me speak on this subject. I, that's right. I forget that. These new things. First, I want to congratulate the people who on the golf course advisory committee, I served on that as well when we opened Paradise Valley, this is our golf course, so that's near and dear to my heart. and dear to my heart. This project is, should be fairly non-controversial. We're asking to redo the zoning to allow light industrial and manufacturing in a building that's been vacant for well over eight years. Adding, having the ability to add dock doors is something that would attract and raise the bar and expand the noose to attract tenants to the site. Four dock doors and changing the zoning from office to light industrial results in a 6,000 trip per day reduction against what is already zoned for, for 100% office. So the traffic concerns are moot. Four dock doors, this, by allowing this, the compromise that was reached with the Planning Commission would allow us to be successful. It does not mandate that we put four dock doors in. It says that we can. The fallacy of being able to demolish this building, which would require a demolition permit issued by the City of Fairfield, and then rebuilt, would require a building permit, which would have to go through the building permit process. Not true, and the economics of that are not viable. The cost to do that would be around $600 a square foot. This is not economical. This project will bring jobs to this area. It will create opportunities. The truck traffic will be minimal, if at all. Again, we don't know who the tenant's going to be. It could be a manufacturer, could be Life Sciences, but they will need some services delivered to their businesses. I look forward to having the compromises reached with the Planning Commission approved. I've worked with staff. I have entertained the community at large. I am a resident of Green, Lower Green Valley, and so this is my neighborhood. And I have worked through this process since, I think it was March of last year when we started, I'm not sure, but it's been, it's been quite a while. Compromise is the way to move things forward. I look forward to hearing about how to move this forward. I'm available, have always been available to discuss the economics of office versus industrial. I don't know if anybody had a chance to see 60 Minutes on Sunday night. They had a great section on the office market and how bad it has gotten. And so this is the new nature of what we can do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Okay, are there any other speakers before I close the public hearing? If not, then I will close the public hearing and bring it back for council discussion. Councilmember Williams.
Well, you knew I was going to raise my hand. So, you know, I didn't, I didn't realize how many people watch this at home until, until we saw this come to agenda the last time, a lot of people that came, but the feedback that I got, once the agenda was published and feedback, and then after we decided the feedback and just moving around our community, we're both in District One, we both live there, was pretty astounding. And the community is clear. They do not want trucks coming through this neighborhood. It's resoundingly clear. It was clear before, when we, when we made the decision the last time, and it has been reinforced since you've, you've left here the last time. So, so they're clear, I'm clear, what the community wants, and it is no trucks. So, so just to, you know, make sure that I'm seeing this perfect is, well, no, I have a question before I make this perfect, because I want to make sure I'm reading the slide correctly. The, the city has already given IBP uses. You've already expanded to IBP, right?
Not yet. We are proposing to do so via this ordinance amendment.
Okay, and with this, there will be, with this, and this expanded land uses, that means no docks.
The ordinance amendment is a package that includes expanded uses as well as design and operating limitations. One of the design limitations would prohibit truck docks.
And this is the compromise?
This is staff's proposal. The compromise proposed by the Planning Commission would allow up to four truck docks.
Okay, so, okay, so I want to make my thoughts clear. So I do like this IBP uses. I do not agree with the Planning Commission, who wanted to approve the four docks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Tonason.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor.
You're welcome.
So, I've spent a lot of time on this. I watched the Planning Commission meeting. I thought staff was mistreated, and I'm just going to leave it at that. You were hard on staff. So, could we, the likelihood that somebody's going to come in here, and I don't disagree with some of the things that Jose is saying, the, Mr. McNeil, sorry. The likelihood that somebody's going to come in and demolish this and put a 45-foot building up is probably unlikely. It doesn't pencil, doesn't mean it can't happen, it means it probably won't. But can we put any safeguards in there for that type of expansion? Is there anything that if we went with the IBP higher, you know, allowing the truck docks, is there any language we could put, or is there any type of long-term use agreement that we could do in order to allow, not allow, that type of use? Or is it just strictly a zoning change that we would?
Can you clarify what kind of use you don't want to see there?
If, if we, well, if, if we want to avoid having a 45-foot warehouse put up there, is there a language that could?
This, the base zoning of these two properties would remain office-commercial, and so those office-commercial standards would still apply. They are designed to facilitate office and retail buildings, so they're not designed for something like a warehouse.
But go back to the screen on 12, where Jose gave us the, because it says warehouse on, go to that one. Now, is proposed warehouse conversion, is that?
This document was provided by the applicant in November.
Okay, okay. So the way that I understand, understood Planning Commission, and I did follow up with them, they said four roll-up doors, meaning two per building. That is my understanding.
Four docks.
Four docks, two per building.
The way I understood Planning Commission was it would be four, and I believe that would apply per building. So it could be four each building, there's two buildings, it could be up to eight under the Planning Commission's amended recommendation.
They meant two per building. If we allow, now, we're talking, what is the difference between a truck docks and truck bays? All the same?
Sir, can you please step back to the mic?
So a truck dock is, you know, where the truck backs in and is adjacent to the, to the building, so you can unload without having to use a forklift to go out and take it out. Grade doors are the ones like garage doors, they just roll up, so they're at grade. Dock, you'd have to build out so a truck can back into it.
Does either one of them allow 18-wheelers? Or do both allow 18-wheelers?
Well, you know, conceivably, an 18-wheeler can pull up to a grade door, 18-wheeler can back into a truck door, that's what they're built for. But, but it's, again, a bobtail could do to both of them as well. A box truck, as was pointed out, could do that as well.
Okay, so, you're, I'm going to have more questions for you. I'm trying to, I'm trying to keep this short, but trying to get across, I mean, I've spent a lot of time, I drove out there, there's bay docks all over the place, it's not, you know, I've driven out there at the peak hours, there's not, you know, I don't see the, the two or three bay doors being a huge issue, but I'm trying to work with you here, but it's.
I would suggest, you know, you asked if you could add something, and I defer to staff because they understand this, but if you put, you could put a restriction on that any change of use or any demolition permit would have to come back to the City Council to be approved, those are restrictions that can be added to any kind of ordinance. This is an ordinance affecting these two properties. So putting a restriction on saying, hey, if, you know, this is what this is for, if there were to be a demolition or a proposed change in the size or structure of the buildings, it has to come back to the Plan, or to the Planning Commission or the City Council.
And maybe that's something we can get to with staff, if we even get there, we've got to, so, did granite, is it granite tile, granite expo?
Granite Expo.
Did they ask for doors?
They did not. I was actually their project planner on their minor discretionary review application. They requested to install this roll-up door that you see on the screen on the left. They do not have any truck docks.
Actually, that's an existing roll-up door.
Would a roll-up door work?
Well, it'd be.
Be better than no door?
So it's, it's the difference in use. I hate the photo they used for Costco with a, with a truck door.
Understood.
Because it shows the pallets there, and that's not something that would occur. But in looking at what can go into this building and who the tenants could be, they're going to accept delivery of light, you know, to do light manufacturing, to do some light assembly, they're going, they need to get some product in, you know, re-engineer it, lack of a better term, put it back on a truck and send it out.
And, and I think, I think that's what, at least myself and probably, I think that's what I struggle with, is I don't know what you're going to put there.
I don't either.
But it's, so, so I'm reluctant to push for extra doors, but I'll, I'll stop here. I'm not opposed to maybe some roll-up, two, a couple of roll-up doors per building, totally up to, you know, up to you guys. The Planning Commission, when I talked to them, they said that four roll-up doors, they said to me, four roll-up doors for the property, so two, two per, or three in one, so.
If I may clarify, staff proposed limiting roll-up doors only on the elevations facing city streets. So there are other elevations where roll-up doors are not limited.
Okay, that is true. Then, so again, using, I don't know if we can go back to that slide with the docks? Yeah, no, not that one, the, the one on the building, the plant I had that had warehouse on there, there. So on the south side, right, south side is, that's the off-ramp for 12, going to Napa, and so that's a non-facing area. The, the depth of the building on the west side, that's kind of the office entrance, and then on the interior courtyard is the office entrance. So this is set up for smaller tenants, you know, 10, 20,000 square foot tenants that will have the ability to put in a dock. Again, we're not mandated to put them in, but we want to have the ability, if a tenant comes in and says, hey, I need one, to do that. The grade doors that we're talking about would go along that side as well, where the docks are, just to create access. You can see, I don't know if you have aerial of the logistics buildings on, on Business Center Drive, the Panatoni buildings that were built, just by comparing them.
Yeah, it's, it's not a comparison to Panatoni.
Yeah, I mean, the depth, what I was getting to is the depth, the difference between a warehouse building and a light industrial building, warehouse building would be 250 feet in deep, this is about 110 feet, so there's just no way you can get the volume of warehousing or, or truck traffic that, that those generate. And that's, that's really the concern from the neighborhood, is what happened there. This is, you know, we got Costco next door that has four docks, we have Safeway that has two docks, we have CVS that has docks.
Okay, okay. All right, so that's, let you guys discuss it, but I'll, I'll stop for now.
Okay, thank you, colleagues. Anyone else? Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance, oh, I'm sorry, I already closed it.
Could you put that up again, please?
So I'll entertain a motion to approve the first reading of Ordinance 2024-01.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Vaccaro. Okay, I'm confused, so, for clarity. This is the ordinance based on staff's recommendation, is that correct? So this is the ordinance based on staff's recommendation. I think it just moved.
Yeah, pull it up again.
Unactioned. Yeah, there you go. Okay, and just to be clear, this ordinance does not include the docks?
Yes, as proposed by staff, Ordinance 2024-01 would prohibit truck docks.
Okay, so I have, the motion is on the floor to approve the first reading of Ordinance 2024-01. Is there a second? No, Councilmember Vaccaro moved it.
Can I do a second?
I'm asking for a second. Seconded by Councilmember Williams.
Have a little discussion, so we're, he's unlimited on roll-up doors, and we're not allowing docks. Is that what I'm hearing?
Roll-up doors would be limited on elevations facing city streets. The highway is not a city street.
So, excuse me, so he can have as many roll-ups as he likes on that building?
So, you, you guys, you guys made a motion to second.
Is there any more discussion on this motion that's on the floor right now? Okay, then I will call for a roll call vote. All right, all those in favor? Can you speak into the mic, please?
I'm sorry, roll call vote is the clerk calls each name.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
So roll call vote is just yes or no?
No, the clerk will call the names for yes or no.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Williams? Councilmember Tonason?
Aye.
Councilmember Vaccaro? Councilmember Panduro?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Bertani?
Yes.
And Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
So six.
All right, that motion carries unanimously. If we do not have any other business before the City Council, I adjourn this meeting to February 6, 2024. Thank you, everyone. Job well done, good night, and be safe in the rain.